You're only missing James, you have everybody else.
Okay. Let's start then. So I call to order the September 15th 2020 GBOS nonprofit recreation grant presentations. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. Start with roll call. I'm Mike Edgington, I'm co-chair and land use supervisor, Jerry?
My name is Jerry Fox and I am co-chair and Roads and Public Utilities.
I'm Erin Boone, Fire Department Supervisor.
I'm Brianna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation Supervisor.
Okay, and if James joins us, he can join as well. Let's start disclosures. So I will, I will mention that I have I've been worked as instructor for, as coach for Four Valleys Community School. When I say worked, volunteered as. So I have a, actually I have an affinity for all of the, all of the applicants tonight. Four Valleys is probably the one I've worked closely, most closely with.
And I will say that's not a conflict of interest. Unless anybody on the board disagrees.
I also have a lot of experience with Four Valleys as mostly volunteer and a previous board member, but I don't think that's conflict right now.
I would rule that as not being a conflict. Okay, any other disclosures? Okay, so the, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a, make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Do we get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, can you do a roll call, Carl?
Yes, Jerry Fox.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Erin Boone.
Yes.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Passes 4-0.
Okay, great, announcements, public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment, please raise your hands visually or virtually and wait to be acknowledged. The municipality of Anchorage and GBOS quarterly meeting is scheduled for Monday, October the 26th at 4pm via video conference, I will provide connection information closer to the time. Agenda, so we'll review the grant process and the budget funding for this year.
I'll have Margaret lead that.
Okay.
Hello. Just wanted to remind you that we sent out the applications back in the early spring and we've received them back, or last fall actually, and received them back and now we're ready to take a look at all of those applications. You've received a copy of them via email and I've had one request for a copy to go to go out as a hard copy, if anybody else needs a copy, let me know. And then with that packet also is evaluation forms for each of the grants. So here you have an overview in your meeting packet tonight with regard to what we have received in the past as far as requests and what was granted. And this year, as you know from the past structure, we have $35,000 to distribute among the bulk of the applicants and then we have hard funding planned for Four Valleys again. So we're just a little bit over what our total allotment is as budgeted. The way that this works is that you should make your allotments among those in the top category and you should fund up to the $35,000. And then when we all get together, you will get the chance to promote or to say how much you wanted to grant for each of those. And then they will be averaged so that we get down to the 35,000 total. So almost nobody, I would expect, would actually get the total amount that they had requested unless everybody asked for or had indicated that amount. But it's really important for you not to round your numbers until you come to the meeting. Does that make sense? And then the last bit is that right now we're scheduled to review the total funding for each of the applications at the October meeting, if you wanted to, we could push it forward and you could do it in September if you feel like that's too much of a lag time. Any questions?
Actually, I'll pose that very question. To my other supervisors, do you feel this is something we can, we can do fairly within a week? And vote on this next week? I don't think the money arrives any earlier, does it? It's just the period of uncertainty is shorter.
I don't mind doing it next week.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think I can make that work.
Okay. So I hear, I hear a sound, we won't vote on that, we'll just put it on the, we'll put it on the agenda for next week. And if, if for any reason it doesn't work, we'll do it in October.
Okay, great.
Okay. Great. And everyone, everyone follows what we're doing. See, I know several others have done this before, so it's, it's familiar. Okay, so let's dive straight into the presentations. Actually, I do remember, was there a, was there a time guideline for each presentation?
A time guideline?
Yeah.
No, we hadn't said anything for anybody.
Okay. I was gonna, if there was, I'd remind you, but there isn't. So let's go straight to Challenge, Challenge Alaska.
Hello, Girdwood Board of Supervisors, my name is Nate Bolz. It's great to see you all once again, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, obviously, a lot has happened in the last year, I believe my presentation to you last year was my first act as Executive Director for Challenge Alaska. And so fast forward a year and I'm just delighted to be here again. It has been an incredible year full of highs, lows and stresses and but at the end of the day, Challenge Alaska's mission remains the same and we are doing a very good job of fulfilling that. Just a brief recap of the last year specifically with how how Challenge Alaska has related to the Girdwood Valley. You know, we've had three Girdwood-based athletes this last year, which, you know, Challenge Alaska draws from Alaska's disabled community, so if you don't have disabled residents, we don't have more athletes, so you know, I'm proud to say that we scholarshiped over $3,000 to those three Girdwood athletes over the course of the year and they all had stellar Alpine skiing seasons last year. We had 40 Girdwood-based volunteers and we were able to do a host of training through PSIA and US Ski and Snowboarding to the tune of $8,500 to $10,000 in value to those volunteers. We had nine Girdwood-based rentals of our facility, which I think, given the pandemic, is, is a pretty darn good statistic. Obviously, events have been sharply reduced this year and as a result, there just hasn't been as much of a demand for a facility. I see that rebounding as, as things reopen and we will be postured to safely facilitate building use requests. We did push through over $9,000 in discounts to those Girdwood-based community events that were at the building. The largest share of that went to Girdwood Fine Arts Camp, which I'm just ecstatic that Girdwood Fine Arts Camp was still able to conduct their camp at Challenge Alaska this summer. It was an incredibly powerful couple of weeks. And they'll tell you all about it. The other thing, over the course of this summer, we have been able to remodel the dormitory facility that's on the first floor of the Kyle Center. So that pending a Alaska State Fire Marshal Review shortly, hopefully we'll be able to start using the building for overnight use again, which we had to stop about a year and a half ago. So, so that's exciting. I'm excited to also tell you that this is going to be our 40th season of operations at Aliaska. And I'm super excited about that. You know, right now, we are committed to having a stellar ski season. And we're going to comply with, with all COVID restrictions and make sure that we're operating in a safe environment as, and getting people a chance to get out there and stay, stay healthy and learn how to ski and snowboard amid the pandemic. One of the largest things that I'm working on is continuing to, to build relations within the Girdwood Valley. I think right now, our relationship with the resort and our relationship with our fellow nonprofits is as good or better than it ever has been and I really hope to continue that trend and, and just be an integral part of the Girdwood community. Right now, Challenge is committed to making sure that we stay on top of the building maintenance and upkeep of the facility there. You know, the building's coming up on 30 years old now and, and so, you know, there are certain things that are starting to show their wear and we are committed to making sure that we protect Challenge Alaska's largest asset and, you know, one of the few community facilities there in Girdwood, so yeah, my commitment on that. The other thing I'm really excited to, to share is the potential of, of doing some summer programming this coming summer pending a VA grant application that we submitted back in March and we'll hopefully find out on that here in the next few weeks. But that'll allow us to start a disabled veteran mountain biking program going on there at the mountain. So that's just a few of the things that we have on the docket for this year. I would love to field any questions you have about Challenge Alaska, about our plans in the valley, about our plans in general, or anything else you may have.
Thank you very much, Nate. I actually do have one question about, obviously, the ski season was shortened this year due to COVID. What are the other, what are the other changes you've had to make due to COVID?
Well, like the resort, unfortunately, you know, we did have to shut down our Alpine ski and snowboard season short. And, you know, that wasn't something anybody wanted to, to do. Aside from, aside from having to cut our season short, we have been able to operate most of our outdoor programs over the summer. We had a couple of different groups go up and explore Denali National Park, we had weekly cycling going on all summer. Some of the things that we had to put on hold temporarily, just because they just weren't feasible during the pandemic, were our annual summer slash event, which is water sports. There's just too much person-to-person contact to be able to do that. And our, our book club hasn't met since the, since the pandemic because the, the nature of the clientele, that needs to be an in-person event and we just can't safely do that during the pandemic. Aside from that, you know, we're, we're posturing for the long haul. I think, you know, the economic outlook in Alaska, you know, we're, we're in unprecedented time where, where we're getting hit from all four of our major economic pillars and, and so right now, you know, we're just doing everything we can to, to make sure that we're planning for, you know, a long rebound of the economy.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I appreciate everything that you do for the community.
Thank you. And our next presentation is from the Girdwood Arts Institute.
All right. Hi, everyone, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Maria Midavaya and I'm one of the directors of the Girdwood Arts Camp, we have many, we have about five directors. So I would like to talk briefly about our program and many of you here on the board and in attendance are very well familiar with what we do. Girdwood Arts Camp is in its 34th year this year, so it's been continuously around for 34 years since 1986. And we run the program for two weeks each summer and this year, we actually started doing winter intensives at the Girdwood School and we are hoping to do winter intensives as well this coming winter. Consider, well, depending on the COVID situation, hopefully that, that will happen. And we have two sessions for kids divided by, by age, we have younger kids and we have older kids. And they spend two weeks creating art and interacting with each other and they love it. Sometimes we offer focus intensives, this year we didn't have one. And usually we have a public show at the end of the art camp, this year we didn't have it, so let me see. Let me go to the, to the year 2020 now. So we made, it was a very difficult time to make decisions whether or not we're going to go ahead with the camp this year. All of you know why. So we were on the cusp, we were thinking about this and we made a decision in July to go ahead and implement various safety measures and change, changes in the way we run the camp to make sure that the camp goes on safely and nobody gets infected with what it should be named. So we halved our enrollment and limited enrollment severely, so the biggest change we did was was cutting enrollment in half and which impacted our tuition, obviously. So our tuition was considerably lower as well, cut in half because of that. But cutting the, the enrollment allowed us to create the safe physical distancing between the kids so they, so that we would follow the COVID measures. And we also enforced masks, cloth masks for the kids and for the staff, of course, for the instructors and directors. And implied a lot of, applied a lot of sanitizers, employed extra cleaning routines. And we are very grateful to Denise Gallup, our Girdwood resident here, who donated her cloth masks that she created, who she made for kids. This year, so, so we had 33 kids enrolled this year compared to our normal 75 or so. And we had also four teenage apprentices who brought extra friends, so we had a lot of teenage exposure to art. So and this year, our big project was repainting the community mural at the playground. We invited a local Deniner artist and activist, Melissa Shaginoff, to do the project. And if you haven't seen the mural, the new mural by the playground, I encourage you to come by and see it, it's beautiful and has Deniner words on it, Deniner text on it. So people who have occupied this area for many centuries. And we got a lot of positive response from families and from the kids this year because the reason why we decided to go ahead with running the camp during this difficult times is because, well, one, we didn't want to surrender to the virus and say we give up, and two, because kids needed it. Kids did not have any enrichment programs, so many of them did not have any enrichment programs since March. And they really looked forward to the, to summer programs. And we did have some wait lists for this camp and so there was a lot of interest. And one showcase, one girl broke her wrist, not at the camp, but biking from the camp. And she showed up next day with her, with her cast on her arm because she was, she didn't want to miss the camp. So that's showing how much kids appreciate it. So that was this year and for next year, we hope that we'll go back to our normal count. So we estimate to have about 80 kids. And together with our teen apprentices, we think it's very important to engage our teens as helpers in the community and expose them to art and also expose them to the possibility that art can be a profession. Because we bring a lot of professional artists into the, to our camp. And we also hope to have the show at the end so that would impact about 250 people. That's our estimate, how people, how many people show up at the, at the show. We'll have focus intensive again, again, hopefully. And winter intensive as well. So we have reasonable fees, I'm just going to go quickly through our list here, we have very reasonable fees for our camp, we have not raised tuition in nine years. GBOS, GBOS grant allows us to have sibling scholarships and also pay for some of the apprentices, the salaries for apprentices. So we are very fortunate to have those, the, the grants to, to be able to offer the sibling scholarships. Volunteers, we have a lot of volunteers and local support, a lot of local businesses donate and support us generously. Some mentions here, the Spoon Line and Bake Shop provides lunches for, well, provides discounts for, for our lunches that we provide to the artists, to the instructors. Lions Club this year offered over the tents for outdoor programming that, that allowed us to create more physical distancing between the kids. Challenge Alaska, of course, offers us enormous discount for, for the rent, which we are very grateful for. We're also very happy that we were able to to lead the magpie out safely. Yeah, we had an incident with a, with a bird inside the building. And oftentimes Glacier Valley Transit offers us rides for the kids when the mural is repainted at the playground, not this year. We did, did the work onsite at Challenge. And of course, Four Valleys is instrumental in handling our registration and communication with families. We're very grateful to Four Valleys for doing this busy work for us. And see for have some mentions here, so we also, besides GBOS, we do apply for a bunch of other grants and, and support. We do get support from Alaska State Council on the Arts, KMTA, Pickle Give, Forest Fair Committee, Atwood Foundation, and we also seek other resources as well. And yeah, for, for our request for funding for 2021 for next year is, is a little higher than we requested for 2020 and that in part is because we took a loss for, for our tuition this year and we are hoping to cover that loss with extra grant sources. And yeah, we are hoping to spend this money for sibling scholarships, for apprentice salaries and some other operational expenses. And there's a link here at the bottom with some pictures from the camp, if you're interested in clicking on that or looking at that, but we don't need to go into that. And yeah, I'm done, if you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mariam. I actually really missed the final show, I enjoy that every summer and I miss the fact it wasn't there this year. So I'm looking forward to next year or the year after, sorry, next year, next year. Are there any questions from the board?
I have one. Mariam, do you know right now where you might have the winter intensives?
Well, hopefully the school will open, that's our well, we have not sort of bought off of space yet. Everything is in flux at the moment, so we are definitely not making plans yet, but we would like to. We have a lot of ideas and equipment, we had, yeah. And kids enjoy it, yes, definitely.
Yeah, I had a question about, because normally this is, you know, even at the 70, 75 places, it's fully subscribed or just about fully subscribed. How did you decide on who got a place and who didn't this year? Because I'm sure there were more applications and spaces.
It was first come, first served.
Okay.
And actually, you know, luckily, Four Valleys also ran some camps at the same time. So some kids also were happy to go to those camps, there was soccer going on, there were some other outdoor programs that were possible towards the end of the summer when things became a little bit more relaxed, I guess.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much indeed for the presentation.
Thank you so much for your support, yeah.
Thank you. We'll go on to Girdwood Community Club, oh, sorry, Glacier Valley Transit, I'll look at the, the list based on the, based on the packet.
Welcome, thank you guys so much, my name's Derek Brewer and I'll be speaking on behalf of the Girdwood Valley Transit. I also, off in the distance here, I'd like to introduce a couple of Lifeline members, if you will. Sam Marshall and Don Johnson. They are in the background, but if we have any specific questions that are geared towards maybe operational information, Sam would be able to help us with that, the day-to-day running of the, of the bus line. And then Don Johnson, who does a lot of our financials for us, and so she'll be able to answer those kinds of questions. I'm just going to lead us through the PowerPoint and answer any questions that you might have. Before we get going on all these, on these slides here, I do want to take a second and publicly thank the Glacier Valley Transit staff, the drivers, also the board members and also any other members who volunteer their time for all their hard work and for all their excellent service during this period of time. Some of the folks, they continued to drive even though we didn't know much about the pandemic at the time. They were willing to come up with great ideas and do all kinds of things for public service and that's what this, this organization is about. We are a public transportation service and we are the conduit between the locals in this community, the visitors who come and enjoy this valley and the businesses that are here. And so we provide what we feel to be a very valuable and important service, so. Thank you, this slide number one says. Let's go to the next one, please. We made some progress, it was, we were off to a really good start this year, actually. Let me reduce my screen a little bit here. We're off to a really good start. This is the fourth year that we've had a fare-free model, which is quite unique. And it's still working, the Girdwood Valley Transportation has broken even four years in a row now. We've received grant funding via area-wide tax of about $20,000 for the last three years. But we still need to re-secur this funding, so this is part of why we're here. The Parks and Recreation Grant was, what we're asking for is $47,600, sorry, $4,765. It'd be great if we had one for $47,000, wouldn't it? Isn't that what we want? I think that's what we're asking for, really, if you have it, we'll take it.
It's just a zero, isn't it?
Just a zero and a blot somewhere. And again, we engage a lot of local businesses, riders and people from all over with our, with our system, our transportation system. with our system, our transportation system. Next slide, please. As it did with everybody, COVID really did a number on everybody. But I think we did a great job of providing safe essential transportation to the residents during this period of time. Unfortunately, the Crow Creek Mine Route operated only on the weekends. And this really affected a lot of the ridership and donations along that way. But the people who were riding it were so grateful that they could get a ride up there. On occasion, we had people who were, you know, very charitable. The Forest Fair was a big hit to us. That's normally a big opportunity for us for fundraising. Last year, we transported over nine thousand riders and received over $3,000 in donations, thirty three hundred dollars in donations. This year, we only have seventeen hundred and forty riders. Three hundred and eighty two bucks. That was it. You can see that's a big hit. And I, you know, I I think it's done the same thing to everybody. So but that's what it did to us personally. Next slide. Ninety eight hundred state funding was cut from the capital budget in 2019. We did transport ninety four thousand passengers in 2018 and 19, of which forty two thousand were local residents. That's an impressive number. Ridership was on track to be slightly higher than last year before April shutdown. And, you know, we still didn't do too bad. I mean, considering all the things, we still gave over seventy three thousand people a ride using our system. Um. Because of COVID, because of the difficulties that were placed on a lot of the local businesses, we do get local funding from donations from businesses for signage and those kinds of things. But what we wanted to do is we thought that it was only fair to give these businesses a break economically. So it was part of our reasons not to take a sponsorship. We still left all of our sponsorship plaques up, so we gave recognition to our local businesses on our buses, but we just didn't feel that coming to them and asking for additional revenue streams from them in these tight economic times was was fair. We did receive a agreement from the Federal Transit Authority, the CARES Act. So we did get some funding through them, and that'll enable us to continue to provide free public transportation to our residents and visitors this year. But as you know, CARES funding is is only temporary, can only go to certain things. So we all know what that is. Our summary is that half our writers last year were Girdwood residents. Our model is sustainable and supporting of our local community. We do have people being employees being served, our families, all the businesses, the parks and trails, all those things that make Girdwood a great area are being served through our program. And one last thing, we just want to thank you guys for everything you do for our community and for supporting us. And we're looking forward to some more support.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Derek.
You bet. Is there any questions or anything we can maybe clarify for you?
Could you say a little bit more about the the FTA CARES grant or the, it was a grant alone?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to go tag and get Don if hopefully we can get her on board and maybe she can clarify some of that for us.
Okay, thanks.
So our CARES Act funding is through the FTA. There is I forget how much money designated specifically for transit throughout the nation. And then part of that was designated for rural transit transportation. And so we get we just got our agreement July first, and it'll help cover most of our operating costs for the next year, year and a half, depending on how fast we go through it. Pretty much administered the same way our regular grant funding is, where we we submit for against the money from the state. So it's a federal grant administered by the state. When we spend money, we get reimbursed for the money. There's still a lot of confusion about what exactly will be covered by the CARES Act and what won't. And that's kind of, we're just going to bill for everything and see what they accept. And anything that's not accepted, we'll use our regular fifty three eleven funding.
Okay.
Which we haven't gotten that agreement yet. Those agreements got pushed back due to the CARES Act application.
Okay. Just obviously with the with the model you have the reduction ridership obviously affects any donations, but it's it's not necessarily a one to one impact. It's because you're being funded from from the federal grant money rather than ridership. It's a, it, you're probably a relatively, although it's still a bad position, but a relatively solid position going forward.
It's really the only thing that's going to get us through the next year.
Yes, yes, I understand.
Without it, we we'd be tanked, which would be very sad.
Yes, indeed.
Done so well.
To great service. And it's good to see this model working so well.
Yeah, we're real pleased to see this model working, and we're really pleased about the things that we're providing for the community. But when you're operating a business under the premise of, well, we'll see what we'll pay you for.
Yes.
That's that's a tough business model. And so, you know, that's why we're still coming back and and asking for donations or asking for grant monies in other places. So
Well, there are, there are things, there are things that won't be covered by CARES Act funding.
Yep.
And there's things that don't get covered by our regular grant funding in general.
Yeah, I've seen some of the vagueness of the Treasury guidance on the on the the other CARES Act. It's very, yeah. Very, very vague indeed. The interpretation changes, yeah. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, guys, and have a great evening.
And thanks for the service as well.
Mike, we skipped over the Girdwood Community Club. So if you want to go to that, we can.
Okay, it was on my list, but I didn't see it on the presentations, on the presentation packet. So let's go to Girdwood Community Club, please.
Okay.
Oh, hello. My name is Louis Leonard. I'm the president of the Girdwood Community Club. This grant request is for the operation of the only non-commercial listener-supported locally operated community FM radio station in Glacier Valley. This grant funded program falls into eligibility category two. That is, it fills a need that the community can't be met by the municipality as effectively or efficiently or is not currently being met by another agency in the community. I'm going to speak this evening directly to the evaluation criteria upon which the board will judge our applications. I will send Margaret the text of this presentation and another more detailed narrative, including the activities of our spring and summer of COVID. This is the evaluation criteria with which the Grant Review Committee will evaluate our application. Part one, what is the purpose of the program and what demonstrated community need is being met? The demonstrated community need is using broadcast FM radio for communicating within our community for a public safety net, providing news, education, weather, and recreation information, and using music to tell stories of the world around us and for recreational relaxation. Music is news of the world. And radio is immediate. It is the only medium that provides fast networking, messaging, communications, and interaction to thousands of people and available to everyone, most everywhere, for free. We provide a public safety net in times of emergencies. We are a main link in the chain of disaster preparedness. The station is an insurance policy we hope we don't need, but when we find ourselves in emergency scenarios, it has proven over and over to be the most reliable for connecting our community to emergency information. Cell phones, Facebook, or the internet fail in comparison. Many organizations in town use us to pass information about their activities. Local on air personalities strengthen the sense of community with information on public issues, including community organizing, events, and broadcasts of GBS meetings. In addition to our worldly cutting edge music with programs produced in both our studios and from other community radio stations around the US, our air staff broadcasts hazardous driving conditions and avalanche warnings. We participate in the federal emergency alert system that includes tsunami warnings and the child abduction amber alerts. We pass information from the Girdwood Fire Department on fire danger and road hazards. Our community FM station is an economic beacon attracting visitors and travelers from Anchorage and the long turning an arm. What is the impact on the community if this program is not provided? Everything I just described to you. The abilities to communicate within the community and the public safety net would no longer be in existence. Broadcasting keeps our citizens connected to our communities and gives these communities coherence. That is a public good that we provide. The enduring value of broadcasting is not something that policymakers should take lightly. What other programs and agencies exist to meet this need and how do they compare to this program? There are no other programs or agencies that exist to meet this need, and absolutely nothing compares to this program. Part two, management of the program. Does your application show effective management of financial and human resources? Oh, yes, as we will describe here. Are there appropriate technical skills and knowledge of this program service? Glacier City Radio has built a state of the art broadcast facility from studio to transmitter with many backup facilities for emergency contingencies. To provide this service without downtime, we provide the professionals and teach our volunteers about all things radio. Is it fiscally responsible? Our fiscal responsibility is proven by our twenty year development and management of an asset that takes other companies hundreds of thousands of dollars to operate. We operate this radio station with five to 10% of their cash flow. Does it have a proven ability and track record? The Girdwood Community Club has been providing services to Girdwood for seventy years. We have a proven ability and track record. When we began radio operations in nineteen ninety seven, our initial investment was about $400 for a five disc CD changer, a microphone, a build it yourself transmitter, and a stuff sack and a TV antenna to spread our minimal signal throughout Glacier Valley. Now our facilities represent an insured investment of over $400,000. We are very fortunate to have received this community's support for the last twenty years to build such an awesome, enduring and enduring resource for our community. Part three, community support of the program. Are the following elements evident in your application? Strong participation. Our volunteer hours in 2019 amounted to five thousand two hundred and forty. Volunteer services. Glacier City Radio is run by volunteers from management to programming. It provides over thirty eight thousand hours a year of recreational opportunities for people in our facilities in a diverse audio, music, computer, library, research, skill building, and electronic operating environment, as well as massive recreational listening by residents. What financial support is there from other funding sources such as private and corporate contributions? Private and corporate contributions brought in fourteen percent of our operating budget last year. We've gone through five seasons of Pick Click Give and will be a Pick Click Give organization again next year. Last year, Pick Click Give brought in 10% of our budget. We currently have three local businesses, one in Anchorage and one in Ketchikan that support us on an ongoing basis, and several others that we work with from time to time. These businesses provided a third of our operating budget in 2019. User fees. Our user fees are listener memberships, which brought 10% of our operating budget last year. It's unclear how our memberships, which our drive happens in October, what kind of money people are going to have to throw out this year. Free is better than fee. Cable, satellite, wireless, and internet providers charge you a monthly fee with a credit check. KEUL broadcasting comes to you for free. We're in your cars and on your home radios. Become a member or donate through Pick Click Give and help us out. Are there in kind donations? Are in kind donations are in excess of $100,000 a year? Part four, specifics of the program, the target population, who benefits from your program? The entire community benefits from this program. Radios are ubiquitous in the home and in automobiles. We are a beacon for travelers on the Seward Highway who get to know the community. And it's not just listeners that benefit, but also the word of mouth that is generated throughout the community by the listeners. Is it cost effective? Oh, our program is outrageously cost effective. It takes other companies hundreds of thousands of dollars to operate similar broadcast stations. We operate this radio station with five to 10% of their cash flow. Did you include a well thought out concept and organizational plan of action? Well, within the limited space of the grant application, it's difficult to condense the dozens of legal and operational manuals that we and others have developed. Here are just a few of the titles of these rather large operational manuals. The DJ manual for operating spaceship KEUL. The legal manual for non-commercial radio stations. The Federal Communications Commission, State of Alaska, and Anchorage Emergency Operations Center manuals for the emergency alert system. Four books of emergency alert system logs and instructions for DJ weekly testing. Transmitter operational parameters logbook for DJs weekly monitoring. The chief operator log for weekly inspection of the entire broadcast chain from the studio to the transmitter. The underwriting manual and accounting book for commercial sponsors. Does the application include measurable results? The measurable results are listed in item two of our application's program information, and they are as follows. We assess how many hours the station is on the air every day, week, and year is close to twenty four seven, three sixty five, as we can get. We ensure integration into the emergency alert system by complying with state and federal regulations. Absorption of community standards by listener feedback. We assess the number of program hosts and staff who train and integrate with the operation. We determine that emergency and recreational information is being transmitted. We monitor the diversity of programming, music, and entertainment. And we assess participants' time commitment, skill advancement, and continued interest in our recreational radio programs. Is this a recreation oriented program? Yes, this is a recreation oriented program. This program meets all the definitions of recreation. Items five and fourteen of our application's program information describe how these definitions apply to Glacier City Radio. In summary, recreation has many faces. It is not only a motorsports activity, it also includes hobbies such as photography, stamp collecting, board games, gold mining, and kite flying. Yeah, telesized phrases throughout our application refer directly to all grant definitions of recreation. The KEUL in our summer of COVID, we began providing information about how to protect yourself and others from the spread of COVID nineteen in the second week of March with Sunday interviews of prominent local health figures. In April, we began airing the weekly hour long updates from the State of Alaska with Governor Dunleavy and the hour long updates on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from Anchorage Mayor Ethan Berkowitz and the Anchorage Emergency Operations Center. Also, local and national news on the Black Lives Matter movement. We are still airing the Friday updates from the municipality of Anchorage and Mayor Berkowitz with Heather Harris, the Anchorage Health Department Director, Dr. Janet Johnston, the Anchorage Health Department's Epidemiologist, and Dr. Bruce Chandler, the Anchorage Health Department's Medical Officer. Also appearing from time to time are many local experts in education, economic, emergency, epidemiology, and the municipal staff. In summary, these programs that we support with our tax dollars are what economists call a public good that provide cheap or free services with enhancements to the quality of life for all community members and need to be supported by the community at large. We are fortunate here to have a resource like KEUL, and it is volunteers like you who help protect and develop our community, free speech, and Glacier City Radio. I will send Margaret the text of this presentation for your use in the grant evaluation criteria form and another more detailed narrative, including the activities of our spring and summer of COVID that will appear in your meeting packet for next week. Thank you for considering the Girdwood Community Club and Glacier City Radio in your perks on recreational grant program.
Thank you, Louis. Any questions from the board? Okay, I have a question. This doesn't directly relate to the grant application, but it's it relates to something I think you said last year about potentially a new antenna going up on the off a tram building. Has that happened or is that still planned? I don't know if that was interrupted by all the excitement.
Well, Well, the information that we're getting and we get it uh through Ellen and and Marco. Uh, it's the architects and and from Larry Daniels at the resort, the, the uh, facilities manager is that it's still in the works. It hasn't happened. Um, there's virtually no information that's really come down the pike this year. It was supposed to happen. Two years ago and last year and this year. Uh, and apparently it's still on schedule to, uh, well, I don't know. Let's just say there's no schedule. Still in the works.
Thank you.
Uh, and and it's at the, it's being paid for by the cell companies. And I believe that um Verizon is the driving uh cell company that's uh involved there. Other than that, um, there's not much information that's known here in Girdwood about that.
Okay, what, what difference will that make to your, uh, to your signal or to the coverage?
It won't make any. Okay. Um. What it will do is it'll provide us, what it, what it does is it provides more um, more space around that cupula up in the upper tram terminal. For uh antennas to be hung, it provides uh easy access from the inside of the building instead of getting and ropes and climbing on the roof. It also provides K E L with a, uh, some more antenna space, little antennas. Uh, so that we can have our own internet uh access up there, uh wireless access. Uh, we, we don't have any internet access up there. Uh, and it's not just the ability to have a, you know, like a wireless connection. We have to have two way communications. So we have to. If it was with the resort, we would have to be inside their system. And I don't think that they won't allow us to have that kind of access. So we, we have our own. I've got three different systems that I've got to, that I can put in place to do that. We just need to have the antenna space to hang that stuff.
Thank you. Apologies for, for nerding out. I'm just interested in the engineering.
Oh, that's fine. And, and the way that we do uh access right now is with a telephone access. Um, and that's how we control our transmitters with a telephone remote. With the internet access, we'll be able to do more and monitor more with our transmitter.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? I thank you again for the presentation, Louis. Um, let's move on to little bears.
Hi everyone, I'm Camille Jones. Uh, I also met you guys when I first presented at the meeting last year for the first time. So this is my second time back. Um, and excited to talk to you guys about little bears. Um, so we can go ahead and go to the next slide. So a little about little bears, um, if you don't know, um, uh, little bears is for all children and families to have access to high quality childcare in Girdwood. That is our vision. Um, of being able to accomplish that goal. Uh, the mission of Little Bears Playhouse is to provide a safe, caring environment that promotes sound, emotional, social, cognitive and physical development of children. While strengthening and encouraging positive relationships among the professionals, families and our community. Um, the goal of childcare throughout the nation has changed dramatically over the last two decades. Uh, it's not really acceptable anymore to simply just provide a safe like daycare atmosphere. Um, and we've risen to the challenge in that. Um, we are expected to utilize a formal curriculum design, assess developmental needs of each child and provide an environment that ensures that they have every opportunity for success. Uh, once they move on to the public school system. And so that has been our, um, I would say consistent and continuing goal. Um, as uh the bar has risen, we rise with it. Um, our goal is for families in the Girdwood Valley and the surrounding communities to have access to high quality, safe and affordable childcare that prepares them for primary school. And just a little bit more about us, um, since 1983, Little Bears has served the Girdwood and Four Valleys community. We provide daily care to 20 children currently daily and around 40 families annually. That number included there is obviously uh our current number which has been affected uh due to COVID-19. And um, things that we have put in place to make sure that we are operating in a safe volume. Um, we currently have eight part-time and full-time caregivers. Um, we are federally federally recognized nonprofit early childhood learning facility. And we continue to provide working families the comfort of knowing that they have this access to safe quality, safe and quality childcare in their community. Um, for most of its life, Little Bears has relied on community fundraising support and small local grants to support our equipment needs. Uh, with donations from the community, Little Bears has provided program needs while keeping our rates affordable. We uh continue to contribute to our new building funds as well as maintaining our current facility. Um, we have absorbed all maintenance costs which has added to our operational costs since the year of 2011. Um, with that being said, uh, our board members and our staff have worked diligently in replacing previous fundraisers with new concepts such as the annual fun run, the winter raffle and our spring silent auction. However, due to COVID-19, we have not been able to host or perform these fundraisers like we normally do, which has greatly affected our um source of uh funding. Uh, why a new facility? Uh, I don't think it's a secret that Little Bears has a waitlist. Uh, um, and we've had one uh for enrollment since 2011. Um, we just, Girdwood just keeps having kids and that's great. We love kids. Um, but we need a place to put those kids. So, um, as the uh demand becomes greater um for additional programs, we would love to be able to expand our service for infants and after school programs for school aged kids even during um the COVID-19. Uh, right in the heat of it there, when we did reopen, um, we were able to um adapt as best as we could to serve school age kids that needed a place to go whose parents were being called back into work or essential workers and they didn't have anywhere else to go. Uh, to keep the quality of our services at the highest level, Little Bears is submitting a request for grant funds to the GBOS for $10,000 in order to improve our facility in many ways. Um, this would be accomplished through ongoing training and certification for our staff members. Um, this would include new training as it comes out as well as the uh um, ones that are renewed yearly or um every two years to keep us up to date and operational as best as we can. Um, providing resources for our community garden, the ability to expand our classrooms through field trips and community enrichment such as trips to the Crow Creek Mine, um, Winter Creek Trail, just getting the kids out in the community and being able to see Girdwood um for all that it is. Um, as well as updating and replenishing our supplies in each classroom. Our COVID-19 update, much like many of the businesses in Girdwood, Little Bears Playhouse was hit hard by the effects of it. Um, we closed our doors mid-March and did not reopen until June 1st and this resulted in a loss of income for almost three months. And prompted us to apply for a PPP loan in order to pay our staff through the closure. Uh, we are now in the process of applying for PPP loan forgiveness, but that is not guaranteed. So this grant would allow for us to keep the improvement of our facility a priority in the face of all of these challenges. In closing, uh, any donations would be used immediately to fund the new equipment supplies for classrooms and remaining funds will be put towards our new facility. Um, you know, we're a nonprofit organization, just trying to give the kids and the families of Girdwood access to the best childcare that they can have. Um, and as our uh community and surrounding communities continue to grow, the greater demand for additional programs grows along with it and we just want to be able to uh use our resources to the best to improve. Um, that for everyone in Girdwood as well. Um, and frankly, we just couldn't make Little Bears the awesome place that it is without you. As you can see with all these adorable photos of children that have been included in this slide. And the sweet little thank you to wrap it up.
Thank you, Camille. Um, any questions from the board? Okay, I, I do have a question. I have lots of questions, but I'm going to just ask one question. So many years ago, when my kids were little and they're now both in their mid twenties. Um, everybody was, I helped run a Chucker facility in the UK, a community one. And uh, at the time, it seemed like the, you know, the um, the certification pro requirements were quite onerous, but looking back, they were not onerous at all. Um, what, what are the requirements you have to meet now approximately? I mean, how many? What sort of qualifications do you need?
Do you mean for uh
The staff.
Itself or the staff? Well, uh,
Staff, yeah, yeah.
Uh, depending on uh their position in the classroom, obviously, uh, Lauren and I um are held to a bit of a hinder standard as well, um, as that goes, but for, in order to um, work at Little Bears, you do have um certain amount of training hours that you have to complete um within every year. Um, now sometimes you can choose uh like the focus of that. Um, but for the, you know, for the main reason you, the trainings are geared towards the classroom that you're in. So it could be um anything. It's like, for instance, during COVID, we were all doing it a lot at home on our computers because that's what we can do. And um, some of us were specifically choosing like areas that were our weakness. Um, it's all, it's like uh online trainings provided.
Right.
When COVID's not happening, we can go to things.
Yeah.
Remember going to things.
Vaguely, only vaguely.
But uh, um, as well as the um, the mandatory CPR first aid training that, you know, expires that we have to continue to do. Um, as well to just make sure that we're always prepared for any type of emergency situation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks again, Camille. Um, I think it's Four Valleys. Yes, Four Valleys next.
Hi, everybody. My name is Catherine McDermott and I work for Four Valleys Community School. We're a nonprofit based here in Girdwood. And we have been specifically serving the greater Girdwood community for 40 years now. This is actually our 40th anniversary. Um, it's been a year like no other and usually this presentation would include highlights of our enrollment numbers and listing of all the different classes we've been able to run. Um, but since we only had two um months of normal operations this year and so much has changed for us. I wanted to tell you about how we have responded to COVID and what our plans are for the future. As well as how vital GBOS grant funds have been for us this year, especially at this really challenging time. When ASD announced the shutdown of schools in early March, we were forced to cancel all of our programs. We were able to keep our staff of three part-time employees paid by implying for a PPP, the Payroll Protection Program loan. Um, and our most immediate challenge was to figure out how to operate our summer programs for kids when risk levels and mandates were changing constantly. It was a very dense and difficult process to create mitigation planning for every single stage of the municipal, the MOA opening. Um, we re-calend our entire summer calendar twice, moving and cancelling and changing programs to give us more time to respond to the different mandates. Like every single organization that is here tonight, the level of problem solving with so many unknowns has made this a very taxing and fatiguing time for small nonprofits, especially uh the community school. We posted no revenue, March, April, May and June. We were able to break even in July and August with our summer program revenues. Um, and for four months, the GBOS grant has been the only positive number on our balance sheet. Those funds have allowed us to continue to offer programs at the lowest price possible so that everybody has access to our classes. It has allowed us to keep staff employed and assure that we would be able to run programs and provide service to our community, even if we couldn't break even. The GBOS grant has truly supported our programs and given staff time to plan and respond to the changing mandates and protocols. During the lockdown and the zero revenue months, we offered zero contact and free activities to engage our community. We did a series of local natural history scavenger hunts on local trails. We tried out online classes like chair yoga. And helped organize a Stumpy's Winter Trail Community History Project. In addition, we participated in helping organize uh Girdwood Run for Women. But we were forced to turn it into an individual trail run after Girdwood faced a local COVID outbreak just before the event. In late May, as the summer neared, we decided to move forward to offer outdoor only activities for local kids. The GBOS grant allowed us the wiggle room to plan for programs like outdoor soccer. Even when we were unsure if COVID restrictions were going to roll us back to a closed status. Our summer program numbers were stronger than we expected. We had about 300 enrollments into our summer offerings. Our goal, no matter what the circumstances, has always been to deliver high quality programs and the Four Valleys staff of Erin Layton and Shannon Beach pulled off six fun and engaging adventure camps ranging from field sports to tides and ecology this summer. In addition to a full program of soccer for kids of all ages. These programs operated during July and August and heavily relied on the use of existing community assets like the Forest Fair Park, the Arburg Soccer Field, the baseball field and the pavilions. Um, again, this really highlights um how wonderful Parks and Rec is here in Girdwood. And at times like these, how important, especially important these spaces are and um what amazing community assets they are. As summer wrapped up, we waited for the Anchorage School District to announce plans for schooling this fall. As our base of operations in the fall, winter and spring historically have been the Girdwood K-38 school. Um, we have a memorandum of agreement with them and a permit to use that facility to provide space for the community to recreate and learn. Currently, no permits are being issued to rentals. And we are in the process of petitioning the ASD to grant us a permit. Um, hopefully when they move to a medium risk status. And who knows when that's going to be. With the weather rapidly changing from here on out, we will require indoor space to operate. But we are also preparing plans for if we cannot operate it out of, out of the school by using the Girdwood Chapel, the Meadows Community Center as well as online um contact, no contact class offerings. Once the community room, um, the Girdwood Community Room is opened, we do plan on using that space as well and I'm sure we'll be uh looking to challenge Alaska as well. For now, we have been able to rapidly respond to the needs of local families thanks to the, to the GBOS grant. When the current school schedule was announced, we looked at ways we could help by providing activities that would fill gaps left by online schooling. And we identified PE and art as two areas that we could offer weekly programs. Next week, we will begin a cross-country running program for elementary age kids followed by a get outside program to take kids out on hikes and run trail, local trails near the school um into October and as far as we can continue to operate. Outside. In addition, we are working with the Girdwood Chapel to open that space for kids who do not have reliable internet access or need a little extra support to navigate online learning. Um, there's a, a number of volunteer local retired teachers who have been mobilized to help facilitate those sessions that begin this week. The past two weeks, we've also applied for two other grants. One is the CARES um Small Business Relief Grant to help us with expenses. As well as the Alaska Can Do Grant from the Alaska Community Foundation. Um, to help us expand our program capacity to online classes. There's no guarantee with any of these grants will be funded as both programs are currently oversubscribed. Meaning that with both programs, the um, the total of grant request, the grant funds requested well exceeded the funds available. Um, it's a first come, first serve. Um, we went ahead and made the ask just going on with the premise of you don't ask, the answer is no, but we are certainly not hanging our hat, our hat on any funds from those two grants. The affordability of our programs will be a huge existing issue going forward. Because we will need to reduce the number of people who take our in-person classes. But then double our payroll during operational hours to um adhere to COVID mitigation guidelines that the school district and most likely municipality will need to impose. This is going to increase our class prices. The GBOS grant will be especially helpful in sustaining Four Valleys for the coming months to help subsidize class prices and allow us to offer classes that are affordable for local families. As the darkness closes in, um, here in the Girdwood Valley with the upcoming winter. The role of the community school is very important to the social health, the mental health and physical health of this community. Um, as I mentioned, this is our 40th year of providing community education and recreation to Girdwood residents. We are very proud. We are very proud to be a legacy nonprofit with the community of Girdwood being the very DNA that created us. And we plan on remaining a viable entity and providing service to Girdwood from now and forever, despite the present-day challenges. Our only plan for the immediate future is to continue to show up for Girdwood as best we can and rebound. The GBOS grant allows us to do that. And thank you very, very much for the support of our program. And I hope I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Catherine. Any questions from the board?
Mike, I'll say something.
Yeah, sure. Yes.
Yeah, this is not just to Four Valleys, but I say this every year. I'd just like to thank all the nonprofits for all the great work they do and all, everybody that's presented tonight. You know, we're very lucky to live in Girdwood, in the Girdwood Valley, with such great programs, with dedicated volunteers who volunteer their time, you know, and don't get paid for it. And tonight, I'm just impressed with the way that these programs have been adapting and innovating in the face of COVID. And I just like to thank everybody who presented tonight. And just thank you very much for all that you do.
Thanks, Jerry. I couldn't say it better than Jerry, actually. I think I've been really impressed with the innovation as well and how everybody's managed to work around. Obviously, it's been harder in some cases than others, but it's responding to, I don't think any of us would have predicted this, definitely not last year, probably not into, at least into most of January. But here we are, and things are still running. And services are still being provided. So again, thank you to everybody. Any other comments from the board? If not, we'll just reiterate, we'll be filling in the evaluation forms and discussing this at our next meeting on next Monday. Okay, public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Any public comments? Okay, not hearing any. We will move to adjourn. And again, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thanks, Arum.
Thanks, Arum.
Bye.
Thanks.